We're ready? Okay. It is nine o'clock on Tuesday morning and we are here for the regular Tuesday morning business meeting. Uh, Charlene Wright will do our invocation.
Jesus, we just thank you that you are peace. You are our peace. And I just want to, to speak shalom peace over Bonner County in every area, Father, in, in the school district, in all of the schools that are starting today, with the children, with the teachers, the administrators, the school boards, in all the businesses, Lord, we speak peace, we speak prosperity, wisdom, wisdom to run businesses during this season, coming into the winter season that's coming up. Father, for those who run our cities and counties, we just, we ask, Lord, that you would give wisdom for every single decision. And I ask for unity, that there would be unity for the very best, not, not anybody's agenda but your agenda, the, what is very best for this area. And, and so I just, I just pray, Father, for wisdom, for insight, for understanding, and most of all, for unity. And we just, I bless this meeting today. Father, give, give clarity in speaking without, without major emotion. I pray that there be honor in, in those who speak and honor in those who hear. Give ears to hear and just voices to speak out today. And we, we bless you and I pray that your presence would just fill this place now, in Jesus' name.
All of us, we pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everybody already knows the rules, we'll skip that.
Do you want a seat? You want a seat? There's one up here, up front. Sorry, you came late. No worries.
I entertain a motion to adopt the order of agenda.
I move to adopt the order of agenda as presented.
Step down from the chair and second that. We have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Uh, there is a confidential item for technology at $12,240 and another one for $90,366.36. And then the airport has a trailer at $79,350. Is that correct? Must be a heck of a trailer. Huh? Okay. Must be special for something. Alrighty, so consent agenda?
Right. Based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Step down from the chair and second that. We have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Orford Dale, up and running.
Good morning Commissioners. Good morning, everybody. Before you, I have Claims Batch Number 24 totaling $863,842.09 for your approval.
I move to approve payment of FY '24 claims in Batch 24 totaling $863,842.09.
Step down from the chair and second that one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, I have EMS Claims Batch Number 24 totaling $36,087.42 for your approval.
I move to approve payment of FY '24 EMS Claims in Batch 24 totaling $36,087.42.
I will step down from the chair and second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Emergency Management, Dr. Cameron.
Good morning Commissioners. Good morning, everyone. Cameron LaComb, Bonner County Emergency Management. Before you, I have, uh, this is for closed grants and document and records destruction. Bonner County Emergency Management has maintained grant documents for projects spanning from 2000 to 2016. These documents are past the three-year records requirement after the grant close date, based on Idaho Code 31-871, which states, "The provisions of this section shall control the classification, retention, and destruction of all county records unless otherwise provided in Idaho Code or any applicable federal law." And CFR, Code of Federal Regulations 200.334, retention requirements for records. Financial records supporting documents, statistical records, and all other non-federal entity records pertinent to the federal award must be retained for a period of three years from the date of the submission of the final expenditure report. This has been approved by legal.
Based on the information provided, I make a motion to authorize Bonner County Emergency Management to destroy all of their closed grant documents past the three-year record requirement per Idaho Code 31-871.
Step down from the chair and second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next, we have Sheriff Wheeler. Morning Sheriff.
Good morning. Good morning Commissioners. Sheriff Darryl Wheeler, for the record, I have three items and we'll take the first one. Uh, I have, um, the city of Old Town is entering into agreement with Bonner County for law enforcement and prosecution services. The sheriff's office will provide all necessary personnel, equipment, supplies, and supervision in order to provide law enforcement services within the city limits. The sheriff's office will also enforce all city ordinances. The county prosecutor attorney will prosecute violation of state statutes occurring within the city limits. For these services, the city of Old Town will pay the county $100 a month. Either a party may cancel the contract with 90 days' written notice and the term of the contract is for two years. The only thing that has changed in this contract from the previous contracts are the dates and the indemnity clauses were omitted.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the agreement between the city of Old Town and Bonner County to provide law enforcement and prosecution services. The city will reimburse Bonner County $100 per month. The agreement will be effective from October 1st, 2024, to October 26th, unless terminated earlier upon 90 days' notice from either party.
Step down from the chair and second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Second item, the city of Dover Law Enforcement and Prosecution Services Agreement. The city of Dover is entering into agreement with Bonner County for law enforcement and prosecution services. The sheriff's office will provide all necessary personnel, equipment, supplies, and supervision in order to provide law enforcement protection services within the city limits. The sheriff's office will also enforce all city ordinances. The county prosecuting attorney will prosecute violations of state statutes occurring within the city limits. For these services, the city of Dover will pay the county $100 a month. Either party may cancel the contract with 90 days' written notice and the term of the contract is for two years. The only things that have changed in this contract from the previous are the dates and the indemnity clauses were omitted.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the agreement between the city of Dover and Bonner County to provide law enforcement and prosecution services. The city will reimburse Bonner County $100 per month. The agreement will be effective from October 1st, 2024, to October 1st, 2026, unless terminated earlier upon 90-day notice from either party.
Step down from the chair and second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
And last item is the medical services contract with Troy W. Gaiman, M.D. Troy W. Gaiman, M.D. has agreed to provide medical services for the Bonner County Sheriff's Office, adult and juvenile detention. This contract will be in effect from September 30th, 2024, to September 30th, 2025. And the physician agrees, the cost of the services will not exceed $51,400 annually. Services will include consultations with inmates, onsite services at the Bonner County Jail, and juvenile detention, inpatient hospital services, 25-hour on-call coverage, emergency house calls, assistance with nutritional arrangements, and other medically related needs. This contract may be amended at any time and either party may terminate the contract with 30 days' written notice.
And this was reviewed by legal. Based on the information before us, I move to approve the medical services contract between Dr. Gaiman and Bonner County Sheriff's Office. The amount of this contract will not exceed $51,400 annually and is effective from September 30th, 2024, to September 30th, 2025. This agreement may be terminated by either party with 30 days' written notice. This contract is identical to previous contract except the dates.
Step down from the chair and second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
Thank you.
Mr. Beers?
I didn't see him here.
Robert?
I'll read his then. From our coroner regarding Salome Autopsy Sink Attachment Shipping and Install Estimated Cost Description, the coroner's office is seeking approval for the purchase of Salome Autopsy Sink Lake Supports, One HP Heavy Duty Disposal Scale Stand with Scale Universal Carrier with Tabletop Autopsy Table for the new autopsy suite located in the new EMS building. The cost for each of the items is listed below. See attached quotes from both Salome International and Mopac. Autopsy sink wall mount center approach $19,295. Sink price includes One HP disposal scale and stand and lake assembly. Two, scale $1,250. Universal carrier $1,595. Cart top tray $849. Shipping cost is estimated to be $1,950. The estimated cost to install the sink provided by Ray Plumbing, $2,015. This was reviewed by the auditor and legal.
Yeah, I'll step down from the chair and make a motion. Based on the information before us, I move to approve the purchase of the autopsy sink associated attachments, shipping and installation cost in the amount of $26,950.
I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have Sergeant Tom, how are you?
Good sir, how you been?
Good.
Good morning Commissioners and fellow citizens of Bonner County. I have two items for your consideration this morning. The first is dealing with office furniture for the new spaces. The Veteran Services Department is seeking approval to purchase the following office furniture items from nationalbusinessfurniture.com, five Symphony antimicrobial vinyl guest chairs with steel frames for $1,955, and two Symphony antimicrobial bariatric guest chairs for $12,1,218. From modernofficefurniture.com, an X-Industrial Series Solidwood Desk Metal Frame L-Desk for $22.99, and one Steel Box Mobile File Drawer for $399. The grand total of these items is $5,871 to be paid out of capital construction. It has been reviewed by the auditors.
Did the auditors give some input on, some of these costs are pretty high, like $2,300 for a desk. Is there a reason we're not using furniture that we already have in the building? And a drawer?
Yeah. I understand that the prices are high and I also understand that most departments are paying for their furniture for the new office spaces out of their budgets. Veteran Services runs a very sleek budget, if you will, and if we had the funds to pay for it out of our current budget, we would be more than happy to. The cost of the items listed are synonymous with what particle board chairs or particle board desks from the same companies would, and laminate, particle board and laminate desks were the same price as that desk.
You currently have a desk. This is a significant, I mean, this is a $2,500 desk you're asking for.
Yes ma'am.
And so, and it's not within, none of this is within your actual budget. And so...
That is accurate.
My, so for me, it doesn't matter what any other department is doing, it's just on the request right here. So, if I go line by line and I look at, you're asking to order a $2,500 desk. What's wrong with the desk that we currently have? Because we have a lot of desks here. So what's the reason for that request?
Um, the desk that I currently have, I have a sanding block that I have to sand it bi-weekly to ensure that it doesn't give me or the veterans splinters soil. And it's a 1970s-era Idaho Department of Corrections desk.
Okay, so, but we have other furniture here for that. And then with respect to the chairs, and maybe, and I thought there was some research done on this chair. Did we need, these are $3,000, this is a lot of chairs. Did we look into other options? And I'm looking at the auditor.
Facilities sourced, seven 500-pound weight limit chairs with antimicrobial cushions for $1,100 for all seven, so.
Okay. And so...
And Jessica Stephanie, for the record, I just want to say I signed the memo because it's my job to say whether or not there's enough funds in the account they're asking for, but I don't think that this is an appropriate use of capital construction funds to buy furniture.
That was going to be my follow-up question. Because I had issues with using that fund last time when we don't really have a reserve and it's not, that's not what the fund is for. Um, so if we had, so let's go on just the chairs. Do you recall if he had the money within his budget for the seven 500-pound antimicrobial ones for $1,100? So he did not have enough for the $1,100.
I just had to put money into his account last night.
Right. Everybody, there were more than one person that received contingency budget got opened for. Okay.
So, at this moment on this day, we don't have the money, other than robbing from Paul to make beer?
Right, and I don't think that's appropriate.
Okay. Well, back to the drawing board on that one. If you want to make a motion, one way or another.
So, based on the information before us, I move to deny the purchase of listed office furniture for the amount of $5,871.
Step down from the chair and second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is a denial.
Second member item I have for you this morning is entering into a lease agreement with Canon Solutions of America. Veteran Services was informed by Canon's sales representative earlier this year that we are paying for a maintenance contract the provider could not fulfill due to the unit's age and availability of parts for the Canon printer in Veteran Services. The current printer was introduced in September of 2009. Bonner County purchased the unit in approximately June of 2015. This was a shared printer with Bonner County Assistance and Veteran Services, but Assistance has gone away. Canon recommends a five-year technology refresh cycle and the offered lease covers that period. The proposed lease is $67 a month with appreciably lower printing costs. I recommend entering into the proposed lease with Canon Solutions of America.
Did you seek out opportunity to share a printer?
I did.
Who did we, is there not a reasonable person to share a printer with instead of doing another agreement?
Due to the ergonomics of the new building and the office space, no, there was not, ma'am.
Auditor shaking her head up and down, yes.
You, you budgeted, you approved the increase in his budget to cover the lease.
Just wanted to make sure that was there.
Thank you. Based on the information before us, I move to approve the Canon printer lease for Veteran Services.
Second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And Mr. Howard.
Good morning Commissioners. Bob Howard, Director of Solid Waste, for the record. Solid Waste is seeking approval to advertise for a request for bids to remove metal piles at the Dickinson sheet, Idaho Hill, and Colburn Waste Transfer Sites. Our current contract ends September 30th, 2024. This contract is at no cost to Bonner County and the bids will be reviewed based on, on the amount offered to the county per ton for scrap metal.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the county... The issuance and advertisements of a request for bid to remove the metal piles at the Dickinson Sheet, Idaho Hill, and Colburn Waste Transfer Sites.
Step down from the chair and second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number two, Bonner County Solid Waste is seeking approval in the advertisement of a request for bids to hire a qualified licensed contractor to accept packaged transport and dispose of household hazardous waste at various collection sites throughout the county each scheduled Saturday. Our current contract ends September 30th, 2024. Once awarded, the contract will be effective October 1st, 2024, through September 30th, 2025.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the county... You guys would approve, that'd be the same thing twice. The issuance and advertisement of a request for bid to accept packaged transport and dispose of household hazardous waste at various collection sites throughout the county on each scheduled Saturday.
Step down from the chair and second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Got another one there, Bobo?
Bonner County Motor Pool is the next item on the agenda, I believe.
Yes.
So, Bonner County Motor Pool. Bonner County Motor Pool is requesting the transfer of 2015 GMC Sierra Pickup, VIN number 1GTV2E2UEH6FZ373778, to be transferred from the Motor Pool to the Bonner County Recreation Department. This vehicle was originally purchased in 2015 by the Recreation Department with a grant and it was transferred to Motor Pool under the previous board, yeah, the previous board. We want to transfer it back to the Recreation Department.
So I just have a point of clarification. Because we had this discussion before, since it was purchased with a grant and we couldn't find that it was actually officially transferred to you, did you guys locate that?
We did.
Because we can't?
We did.
Okay. All right. Based on the information before us, I move that the county approved resolution number to be determined authorizing the transfer of 2015 GMC Sierra Pickup with the VIN number ending in 3778 from Motor Pool to Bonner County Recreation Department.
I'll step down from the chair and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
I'll look waste. I guess that'd be you. You want to read it?
No, it's Lakeland School.
Okay. All right. Bonner County Solid Waste is seeking approval in the issuance and advertisement...
Commissioner Bradshaw, it's Lakeland Joint School District 272. Do you want me to read it?
Okay, I'm ahead of myself.
Lakeland Joint School District Number 272 is requesting an L2 certification extension request until September 21st. This will allow the calculation of average daily attendance for the purpose of potential levy request. Is there, so they have a letter on the back. Lakeland Joint School District would like to request an extension of the September 5th date for having our tax levy information submitted to the county. Our board may authorize an emergency levy that requires counting the average daily attendance during the first week of school. We are starting school on September 3rd this year and will use the first three days of school for enrollment. We anticipate that our Board of Trustees will meet on or before September 11th to consider the potential emergency levy. We would therefore like to request an extension until September 21st. So, based on the information before us, I move to approve Lakeland School Joint Number 272 L2 Certification Extension Request. They're just looking to extend the date, not the period that they're auditing.
I'll step down from the chair and second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And I have two here for Solid Waste that are not on this list. Huh? Oh, did you? Alrighty then. Okay.
District 2 report. So first, and I only stole one of these where I found it, there's a free healthcare clinic going on. A lot of people have talked about healthcare issues. It's going to be at Cootney County Fairgrounds from the 19th through the 20th. So that is a service that is being opened up to our community to participate with. I did get to meet with Governor Little and members of his cabinet regarding the Albany Dam. So, take notes. So, what was great was that of the people that participated, they very clearly advocated that the timeline of Army Corps of Engineers was way too long. They're talking three to five years a gate. And so the congressional delegation is open to having a dialogue with Army Corps, saying that essentially the group is, why are we not just fixing it all versus going gate at a time? Because that will extend the timeout. Um, they're taking the gate, they took the gate down, they send it over to Seattle, they x-ray the gate to look at the cracks. I advocated for, some of the investigation is unnecessary, like looking into how much are we losing in terms of tourism? It doesn't change the fact that the gate is broken. So Governor Little was very clear that identifying the urgency requires us to get it to the top of the email box and so one of the ideas was to address the safety and health and well-being of our community. If we have a heavy rain or a heavy snowfall and those gates need to be lifted, what is the Army Corps' plan in that eventuality? And so, we're going to, the congressional delegation is going to have a discussion with Army Corps. They're going to do another small review with the same similar people that were present, which was inclusive of the mayors in the area, to see if we can't push to go faster. It didn't sound like the issue was funding. It actually sounded like it might more be the timeline of Army Corps of Engineer and that is a question that is going to go to them to answer is, is this really their timeline versus a funding issue? Because 90% of that funding appears to look like it's already been identified through Bonneville. So we're trying to understand why do it one gate at a time. So there was, it was a great conversation with the mayor of Sandpoint, Mayor Grimm, identifying the impact to our tourism, but also the need to address those people that live and recreate and they want their water. So, that is going to, they did float an idea of, should there be a second opinion of what the Army Corps is doing or do we just have to go with what the Army Corps is doing? That might be a little bit more difficult to actually achieve, but that idea did get floated. Representative Souter did have conversations with engineers down south about what are the options to expedite it and do we really need to take that timeline? And so there's a lot, there was a, it was a very good opportunity for Bonner County to come together with a consensus of, we want it fixed now essentially and not waiting three to five years per gate times 10 gates. That's a very long time. And so, there is going to be another conversation, but that, that idea has the support of the congressional delegates as well. I did participate with the Capitol for a Day and we got to talk about, and I got to speak with Department of Transportation. So, Dufort Road, the idea of a light is not reasonable and so they explained it, why we're not doing that. And it is actually a safety issue. So first, we need to hear, which was actually good to hear, that road is the top five concerns of Department of Transportation. It isn't that they're not. They're actually doing the test to determine what the right thing to do is and it sounds like, it sounds like it's going to be more of an exchange, not a light. Lights cause more problems. Some of it has to do with educating us on slowing the speed, but in that particular area, it looks like an exchange would be more reasonable. It is on their top list to pay attention to. Lakeshore is the one where that's reasonable, that they would stop a left-hand turn to force you to turn right and do the... force you to turn right and do the loop back around and come back up. So they are paying attention to 95 and those concerns. I did push for those of us in Spirit Valley, that Spirit Lake Cut Off Road to 41 concern. They are going to look at that as well as that storage place opens up. The concern is the speed in which people travel and the accidents. Should that actually justify a light? And that is something they'll look at. It has not, the storage place hasn't opened, but we've had enough accidents that something does need to happen there. But the research is being done. So it was good to know that our concerns are on their top five concerns. They're doing the job of gathering the data to determine what the right thing to do is in that area. I did get a good contact for seeing where are we with that study to see what that action will look like. Idaho Department of Water, the reason that we all need to really force that adjudication of rights is when something happens, it helps our state to be able to argue our rights as the states around us are looking for water. So Department of Water did discuss that quite a bit at our, at the Capitol for a Day. So events that are coming up, I'll give an announcement that there are two Planning and two Zoning Commission positions that will need to be filled in the month, they'll, they'll end in September. So if you have that interest, pay attention to that advertisement. On the 6th of September, there is a pollinator pathway trip, and it is located, the location to start is at Beaver Creek. I have a struggle time pronouncing that word, but the person who knows this can say it, at the park in British Columbia at 10:00 AM. On the 21st of September, at the Blanchard Community Center at 9:30, we are doing Stop the Bleed Narcan Training and Education on the AED. Following that same day, our chief carpenter is holding an event in that parking lot. So I'm going to do a flyer as soon as she gets back. She's over in Yellowstone hiking, and then do kind of a combination. But it's going to be kind of an emergency preparedness opportunity there. On September 28th, it's Constitution Day. Their keynote speaker will be Bill White. LD2 reps will be in, present, and that is at the, down in Shoshone County. And so that is all I have. We don't have, the form from Camp Bay Road has not been sent over to Bill Wilson yet, but is, I very clearly heard, we need to make sure, because you weren't here when your wife was here. So she was very clear on make sure that it leans in favor of Bonner County people. Bill Wilson heard that as well. So as soon as we receive it, we'll, oh, you guys aren't sitting together. I see you're back there now. So it's on my radar to make sure we review it for what is contained in that as well. But it just hasn't been received yet. And that's it. Any questions for me on what I reported out?
Good morning, Commissioner Williams. George Garrick for the record.
Say your word, that word. It's Beaver Creek, the word.
Provincial Park.
There, there you go.
Yeah, I'm, I'm the one that's leading the, the trip up to BC. It's going to be fantastic. Fantastic opportunity to network with folks that are, are doing fantastic work at both the regional district and the provincial, provincial level.
And I did reach out on the Idaho Conservation League, and so I'm trying to get information on that to report out on that. But that isn't how it came to be, and is there an opportunity for the public involvement?
So that was going to be one of my two questions to you.
I forgot to mention that.
Do you have any idea when the Idaho Panhandle Public Lands Initiative is going to be discussed in a public setting?
I'm trying to get that so that we can do it on an actual agenda item.
Okay. This is just kind of a general question. On August the 19th, I submitted two public records requests, and I haven't heard back from them. And so I'm just trying to clarify, there is a, a specific timeframe that, that we're supposed to hear back, right?
Mm-hmm.
And I haven't heard back. Is, is anyone in that job doing that? Who is it?
It's Mrs. Dixon. Do you want to give, do you want to forward it to me, and then I can see where we are with it?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions about what I reported out? Yes. Albany Dam.
Yes, Jennifer Kramer. Thank you, Asia, for the report on Albany Dam. Question on timeframe. Did they give any kind of timeframe on when the legislators are meeting regarding doing gates simultaneously, et cetera, et cetera?
They didn't. So after our meeting, the congressional delegates were going to go back to Army Corps to have that conversation because the three to five years was, per gate was not reasonable. And so I will, I've got both, all the contacts for that to see where are we at with having that discussion. And there should be another round table that's inclusive of Army Corps about the timeline that they're choosing.
Okay, so you'll keep us...
I'll keep posting it to you. Yes. All right. Thank you. I think we're on public comment now.
Okay, public comment. Mr. Garrick, name, name for the record.
Good morning again. George Garrick for the record. Commissioner Bradshaw, I, last time, I asked whether or not you had planned on moving. And I'm, I'd like to know if you would answer that question.
We'll all move sooner or later.
Right.
I'm here till January.
Okay. I'll take that as an affirmative that you're going to move. So my question to you is, will you recuse yourself from any votes or decisions based on the county comprehensive plan update, or any votes to fill vacancies on the, either the planning or the zoning commission?
Nope. I will do the job that people who elected me to do it, until the very last day of my term.
Thank you.
Now, Ms. Kramer.
Jennifer Kramer, Bonner County resident. I guess I have a question regarding Mr. Omot, who is absent today. His resignation was to be effective September 7th, which has not come yet. And by him not being here, it appears he's prioritizing his new job over the needs of the county. So I, I'm curious, is he doing any county business, any county work this week? I assume he's still on payroll. He has an obligation to the residents of Bonner County and the staff of Bonner County, so I'd like to know what his status is for this week.
You would probably have to ask him that, but he is doing work, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And nobody else signed up? Anybody online? Nobody? Let me thank this one out. Morning, Dan.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I speak to the issue of oath of office. Seeing that Luke's not here and he's taking a job someplace else because he didn't win his primary, it might be partially because he has forgotten or did not recognize his true duty to the oath of office. Idaho Constitution states that the oath of office is to the Constitution and not to the laws of Idaho. There was a code created to mitigate any, how do we say, ambiguity of that oath. And that code also states that it is to the Constitution and not to the laws of Idaho. We've researched this record across the counties in Idaho, and there's at least 50% or more of counties, some didn't respond, that do not require laws in the oath. So with Commissioner candidates, two of them present, and a sheriff candidate who is present, I would reiterate that the clerk, who is also present, draft that oath of office to exclude any laws in the oath, because it is not in compliance with either the Constitution or the Idaho Code. Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Okay. Anybody else? Good morning, Mr. Dupree. How are you?
Well, for the record, John Dupree. And I had the privilege of going to the Capitol Day to actually hear our governor and many of the heads of departments, and it was a real joy to be there. Now, I had a couple of things I wanted to share that I learned there. By the way, I sat at the table, and behind me was the camera filming it all, and I had a clear sight of the governor, and we were eye to eye almost the entire time because of that. All right. I asked the question, this ranked choice voting, and it affects city, county, state, all of us here. And I said, okay, apparently if it passes, there's going to be a lot of computer stuff necessary. There's going to be maybe elections and things like that, necessary. Who's going to foot the bill for that? Will it be the city, the county, the state? And he looked at me and says, you are. Oh, you mean I, the taxpayer, am going to have to pay all the bills for Prop 1 passing?
Mm-hmm. We always foot the bill.
Bingo. Okay. Well, that solved a big issue to me. I don't want to take on stuff that we don't need, one. Two, I asked the, the head of the Education Department, you know, we have a whole contingency of teachers' union folks here wanting to always push levies. And I was at a, a meeting of the school board, and one of the school board people made a recommendation of a million something that would cover the cost to serve the students. And they were saying, yep, we could do that, that's good. And, but you guys are talking about a $4 million or something or other. Well, yeah, maybe, maybe. Well, what it really was, in my humble opinion, is a poison pill. You got the cost of things to serve the students, and then you have increased salaries for staff and teachers. And apparently, I understand...
Which the teachers never get.
As I understand, it's a matter of, anytime a levy comes up, the teachers' union wants to have all these salary increases for the teachers and the staff. And gee whiz, why doesn't a levy pass? Well, maybe the bill is a little bit too high for the citizens. And there are a lot of families that are poor, that have property taxes, and anytime you add more taxes to it, we're running a risk of these children that are part of families that don't have a lot of money, they might lose their home because of increased taxes. And thank you for allowing me to go. 18 seconds over.
Teresa has her hand up online.
Ms. Heisner, you got your hand up?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We can.
I just wanted to say, I think we should be charging these cities a hell of a lot more for our sheriff services. They want to build all these homes, but they come crying to us for services. And I know it's not unusual to contract out with cities because they can't afford their own PDs, but I really think we should be charging them a lot more. We can barely get any service out here in our rural areas. I live in a 45, and these people drive 75 miles an hour. Someone's going to get killed. Excuse me. So I just think, Sheriff, we should be charging a lot more to these cities. Like I said, they want to cram in all these houses and then come crying to us. Thanks, guys. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, how are you?
Good.
Name for the record. Nice shirt.
Thank you. Daniel Willey for the record. I am a Bonner County resident. To Ms. Heisner's question, I also had a question on that. Having come from Los Angeles, the area I lived in was LA County, and services were provided to both Palmdale and Lancaster by LA County Sheriff's Department. Those two cities pay the county per car per day, not a blanket fee. Well, it's worked out as a blanket fee, but it works out to two officers or a single officer per car per patrol day. You got three shifts, so it's three cars. And whatever the area is, whatever the balance is. But they're paying for the officers that they, a city of that size would normally have. And I found that the agreement between Old Town and Dover to be absurdly low for the accounting to absorb. Just my opinion on that, and I hope that maybe it could be resolved in the future, because I think it'd be far more equitable if they paid a fair share. Thank you.
That was my thoughts exactly when I was listening.
I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I'll, I'll put Sheriff on the spot, but I think part, because I had the same question before. I think it has to do with, we're not guaranteeing them a car in their city. We're not guaranteeing them an amount of service. It's just, it's more of a, you dial, they come if there's an available, it's not a guarantee. And so if we were to do it by car, then the sheriff's office would have to guarantee a car for Old Town. Is that, am I saying it correctly? I think, because I have the same one, because that, in my mind, doesn't cover gas, but we're not guaranteeing them that service there.
And they do pay county taxes. They just pay city taxes in addition to that.
So it's, it's what, what they're actually getting is not...
Cost of living in town.
So, but I agree. Okay.
So, anybody else? Gee, you want to sing a song or something? Nothing? Okay. Well, this was exciting. All right. It is 9:44, and I adjourn this meeting. Thanks, everybody, for showing up.